All in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we come to you in the precious name of Jesus, Lord, we're asking you to guide us, to teach us, Lord God, the right way in the decisions we make here tonight for the benefit of the city. And Father, we thank you, we invite you in our presence, Father in Jesus' name, amen. Okay, so, so, treasure's report?
Sure, this one gives me out, boy. Okay, the treasure's report for March two thousand twenty-five. City clerk got two thirty eighty-five, city treasurer two seventy-seven oh five. The streetlight was only five dollars and thirty-seven cents because it was so much the last time. Legion Hall was a hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Dale got some parts, so he got reimbursed for fifty-six twenty-nine. Our ag partners' fuel bill was eighty-one twenty-six. We got mousetraps for the post office for eighty-seven ninety-four. Our yearly insurance was four thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars. We've got some copies of our deals for twelve dollars and forty-five cents from Wolf's. The general balance is twenty-two thousand fifty dollars and nineteen cents. On the water side, our waste operator is a hundred dollars, our water operator was two hundred dollars, our meter reader was a hundred dollars, the barn was twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, the pump house was a hundred and eleven dollars and one cent, one-one-one-one. We used two hundred and seven units of water at three hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents. Our debt was four thirty. We paid Terry Brown for labor for five hundred dollars, and our current balance is thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents. We also got a letter from the historical society, and I made sure that everyone, the council members, got it and read it and see what you could say, think about it. If there's any questions, you can call this Jamie or email her. What's your last name? Cr- Crivoco? Crivaco? I have no idea.
He just wanted me to try to pronounce it.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments? Any corrections to be made? No, I'll entertain a motion to approve the treasure's report if read.
I'm making this to be approved, the treasure's report.
All in favor? I would, if I could, ask Shirley to maybe start including the other money the city has of CDs.
When, when they do, when they get their interest each time, like the G eight or whatever it was, the G N R or whatever the other bank is, I put those at the bottom. When we get their interest things and the totals, every time I put those in there, even when they do the savings, I put those at the bottom. Like every three months or every four months, something like that.
So this one that's there now, thirty-seven thousand sixty-nine years?
That's every year.
Which one, which account is that in now?
That's in that other bank. That's in that gin bank.
CD?
Um, I don't know. It says maturity. It isn't, I think it's a CD. It's gotta be.
That's kind of what I'd like to know. If it's not a lot of product, I'd like to see that on there every month. Is that what you put on every month?
Yeah. It's not something I put on every month because it doesn't change every month. Every, like every three months, whenever they send me, like, this is what your deal is for the third month, this is what your deal is for the quarter, whatever, then I put them on there. Like when the savings comes in and says that the interest is, I put those and the balance on there. And when I get the CDs, when they come in for their yearly thing, I put those on here.
Okay, do you have a motion to have those financial record statements included on the financial report?
I make a motion to put the financial report on.
I hate that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, she's here. We'll have a reading of the minutes by the clerk.
All right, so this is the March third meeting. The Houghton City meeting came to order at six fifty-five P M. Mayor Jim Foster started the meeting with a pledge and then prayer. We have five council members, six guests, Mayor Jim Foster, Treasurer Shirley Dodd, and City Clerk Vicki Schutz, no one without them. Michelle Dodge read the treasure's report to the council. Dale had a question about the Everdue streetlight, streetlight bill about the six hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-five cents, white was so fine. Michelle Dodge would check the bill and then let the council know what happened. Tracy Sharp made a motion to accept the treasure report. Shirley Ashton seconded. Motion carried five to zero. Vicki Schutz read the minutes from February meeting with no corrections. Shirley Ashton made a motion to approve the minutes. Sharon Willie seconded the motion. Motion carried five to zero. The city clerk corrected the January minutes, and the mayor and clerk signed them. Vicki Schutz had two correspondences. She called us to Olson about being our city attorney and gave a letter to Jim to deliver to him to Sabetta. She also sent a thank you note for those that helped with snow removal, old business. We talked about the letters from the post office. We have four letters stating we have something to fix in the post office. Vicki Schutz will review and correct letters. We were rewarded. Said that he would donate the crowning molding for the post office. We talked about the bids from David Barnes and Richard Rosenberg for the Powhatan Legion Hall room and the treasurer's office. The council looked over both bids, then decided to go with David, David's bid, and we will take, we will ask to take up insulation price. Sharon Willie made a motion to accept David Barnes' bid for nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-two minus the insulation above tile for a new total of eight thousand five hundred and twelve dollars for the city room and office. Dale motioned to approve that we get bids for the work, and Jackie Zimmer seconded. Motion carried five to zero. Vicki Schutz talked about the letters about the D M Rs discharge monitoring reports, records, and she will investigate what she needs to do. Vicki discussed with workmen's compensation regarding the cost for the city to restart program, which was one thousand ninety dollars. Jim Foster wanted Vicki Schutz to talk to Stuart Matheson if the employee was paid over twenty thousand per year, if we needed workmen's compensation or not, and also check for hours required, volunteer work as well. We asked Stuart for a formal letter from Skid Loader Barn. Dale Schutz talked to Terry Brown and said his payment would be okay with him. The city owes five thousand for the remaining balance of the skid loader. It's been a day. For the remaining balance for the skid loader, Jackie Zimmer's made a motion to pay Terry Brown the remaining balance of the skid loader, and Sharon Willie seconded the motion. Motion carried five to zero. Dale Schutz announced installation of security cameras and locks. He told the council that Jim Foster has the paperwork keys and codes for everything. We talked about how they were going to proceed with the codes for the shelter house and Legion Hall. Jackie Zimmer's will make sure that the doors are open for the events. The council asked Tracy Sharp if he wanted a job for wastewater operator, who said yes, and would ask advice, would ask advice for, from Roland Keller. The city will pay for any training to the wastewater operator. Dale made a motion to hire Tracy, and Shirley seconded the motion. Motion carried four to zero, with Tracy abstaining from the vote. Vicki Schutz will look for a lagoon school. Under new business, the city council had a letter from Joel Huffless about being the water meter person for Powhatan. Jackie Zimmer's made a motion to hire Joel to be the water meter reader for Tracy, Tracy Sharp seconded a motion. Motion carried five to zero. Luke Pollack provided a letter about wanting the auto recordings of the minutes. Jim Foster said the recordings are for his personal use, and Mr. Pollack already had a video recording that he records every month. Dale hooked up the water in the basement, and now it's working. Dale also requested reimbursement for fifty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents for purchasing parks. Sharon Willie made a motion to reimburse Dale for the parts, and Jackie seconded the motion. Motion carried four to zero, with Dale sustaining from the vote.
You pushed play instead of recording play.
Streets, we had no business on the streets. Parks, Jackie Zimmer's let the council know what the city of Powhatan received. A thousand grant from Ruth and Roger Wolf for the park to help remove the tree stumps in the park. Tracy reported that there was a beaver at the lagoon, and we will find out how to get rid of them. Jim Foster requested that the city reimburse volunteers that mowed for the city for the cost of their gas. Jackie made a motion to pay them when they turned in their receipts for gas to the treasurer. Shirley Foster seconded the motion. Motion carried five to zero. Bob Paul from Olegion brought in agreements that the city assigned, and the following signed were Duane Moore, Duane Foye, head of Olegion, mayor Norwood Foster, and Vicki Schutz's father's input. They also confirmed that the ceiling tiles are prepared for installation on Friday. Sarah Germin applied for a ten thousand grant for making improvements. She will not hear anything until mid-April, hoping to improve the horseshoe pit and launch a commission to cut the dangers metal that is in the park. Jackie Zimmer's made a motion to give permission to Sarah Germin to make improvements, and Sharon Willie seconded the motion. Motion carried five to zero. Dale Schutz made a motion to go into executive meeting at twenty minutes, and Shirley Ashton made a motion. Mayor Jim Foster called the meeting to order at eight thirteen. We talked about water meters and people not paying their bills on time. Jackie Zimmer's made a motion to end the executive meeting at eight thirty-three, and Shirley Ashton seconded. Motion carried five to zero. Then the mayor called to resume the regular meeting at eight thirty-three. Have a note for the business. Sharon made a motion to a joint meeting. Jackie Zimmer seconded the motion. Motion carried five to zero. Reminders, next meeting, April seventh at seven P M. Michelle will investigate any bill, and Vicki Schutz will give a letter. Most do her math, she's good about this.
I agree with this one, though.
The only thing that I got is an old business that's been upset, I think you made a motion, I think that motion was to get bids for the post office. By the time I can fit to this.
Oh, yes.
I did notice for bids for the post office.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Make a motion to accept the manager's request for the life. Corrections, corrections.
Second, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Albert is just in here, just a second. Okay. March twenty-seventh, two thousand five, two thousand twenty-five. The city, the Houghton City Council's special meeting came to order at six P M. Mayor Norwood Jim Foster read the request for a special meeting regarding a bid from Joel Huffless regarding the post office work and talked about paneling for the city room and office rooms. Those that were present were Mayor Jim Foster, Shirley Ashton, Jackie Zimmer, Sharon Willie, Tracy Sharp, Vicki Schutz, Michelle Dodge, and Dale Schutz was absent. We had, we also had two guests. Vicki presented the bill from the Good News Handyman Service, Joel, and went over all the details of what the bid was on. We had some discussion about materials as to what they were. They were explained in after discussion. Shirley Foster moved to accept the bid for eight forty-three forty-two from Good News Handyman Service, and Jackie Zimmer's motion, or seconded the motion. Motion carried four to zero. The city clerk presented the paneling option to the city council and they looked them over. The council discussed having lighter paneling in the two rooms. After looking over some options, the city decided to go with American Pacific paneling from Menard. Sharon Willie made a motion to go ahead and let David Barnes order the American Pacific paneling, and Tracy Sharp seconded the motion. Motion carried four to zero. Sharon Willie made a motion to adjourn the special meeting, and Tracy Sharp seconded the motion. Carried four to zero.
I always make a motion during.
So crank the door at least.
Okay, on that, I talked to David, and what, do you remember what the price was on that paneling that looked at?
It was like sixteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
I think that's the better.
Seventeen seventy-nine.
Seventy seventy.
Seventeen.
Dave said the only place he found that was down in Topeka, and I think he said they were asking up with thirty-one or thirty-three dollars.
So the price question went and went back up.
Amazon does that to me all the time. I buy something, I think it's on sale, and then two days later, it's really on sale.
So, question there is then, do you want him to go ahead at that price?
I, that's a lot.
He did say, I did ask him when I was talking to him where he got his paneling. He said in Hiawatha at Carpet Plus. I didn't know they had paneling. So maybe we should check there and see what their price is, so he might have.
Maybe that's where he went.
I think so, yes. That would have been his.
His was twenty, what, twenty-eight?
Yeah, something like that, yes. Did he ever say how many sheets we need?
Yeah, I think he said.
I think it was like twenty-six.
I don't know what it was. We're in here. I think the depth, we're in the twenty-six sheet. No, twenty-one sheets. We're in here. Twenty-four to twenty-eight per sheet. I don't know what, what it was, how many sheets for that.
Well, let's see.
I know, I know, he said that the only place that had the paneling on hand was down in Topeka.
It was thirty dollars and something like that.
Okay, so the north city room, there was twenty-one sheets, and then the south city room was twenty-three sheets. And his estimated cost per sheet was twenty-four to twenty-eight.
And both of them.
Yeah, because they were, one was six hundred, and one was six sixty.
The twenty-one, they have twenty.
He said the north side, he said the north side.
What'd you say? Wait a minute. You got, if you got a question that just. What's your question?
Why is there more for that smaller room than there is for this room?
Because of that wall, maybe?
Because maybe he's not right there because he was gonna put a wall around it, maybe?
Yeah, he was gonna do something around the front.
No, there are only, you only, there was twenty-eight, twenty-one for this room and twenty-eight for the room on my right.
Twenty-three.
What either way.
That's still a little.
Yeah.
Because this is the north side, that's the south side. That room's quite a bit smaller than this room.
Really?
Yeah.
Maybe he got them backwards.
Could be.
Okay, well, I think, Vicki, you want to get a hold of him and tell him about the discrepancy and ask him to rewrite? We're not sure what paneling we're going to look.
No, not yet. If there's someone in Hiawatha, if there's someone up there that'll work, that's fine. I mean, I don't care where they get it.
Yeah, I can go after school and look and see what they have, and I know kind of what you guys want, so.
Does anybody have any other comment on that? You have any more?
No, I just need this approved. I'm not going to picture it.
Yeah.
Special meeting.
You need to put your job in.
I gotta put my job in.
Yeah.
We won't go into history. I need a motion to approve that. Does anybody here?
I need a motion for this.
I need a picture of it.
I make a motion to approve the special minute, special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that in mind, I'd like to make a comment. You know, the rules for special meetings, executive sessions are, they're outlined what the subjects that you can call an executive session under. And some of the things that were called is not legal.
Special meetings different from the executive.
I said executive. There's, there's guidelines that you can call, that you can call executive session under. And I just, I was, as I mentioned before, that somebody might want an executive session and some of this stuff, and it doesn't fall under there.
I think if we're gonna discuss a personnel, any of something has to be executive session, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
We don't have to do that very often, you know, doing like.
Okay, did you have anything else?
Yep, I got some correspondences. Dale has the road and bridges for the streets. I did send a letter to Maximum Realty, or Maxi, yeah, Maximum Insurance, Maximum Insurance. I just sent them a letter stating that there is nobody to be requesting information for the city because I think that's a private matter, and I just listed the council members to get information, that nobody is to call in and to say, hey, what's the policy on Powhatan City? So only the council members can go do that. Of all of us three?
I was gonna say, wait a minute.
And then I did send a letter to somebody about their water bill being late, and I have not heard a word from them yet. You want to talk about that one?
We had a complaint turned in to the Attorney General about the council's refusal to give Mr. Pollack the information to do the questions. And we had to answer some questions that they sent back. And I answered those questions and then took it around to each council member, had them read over what the Attorney General asked us. And they reviewed my, my answers to the questions, and I asked them whether they agreed or disagreed, and they all agreed that the answers were correct. I mean, it was nothing really complicated. It was more or less yes or no answers to it, okay? But we did, did take care of that.
Well, we sent some documents along with it, so.
Yes.
And Dale, you want to do the road and bridge stuff?
Yeah, I can do that. The city streets are not very good shape. Before, I mean, it hasn't been done, I don't know how long, longer than it should have. We used the rock and oil every other year, and then it got expensive, and I could did it every other, every third year. North streets, north and south one time, east and west the next time. I don't know when it was done last, but they're not in, not in very good shape. So Barry contacted the Brown County Road Department, and they, he told them that we wanted to do our north and south streets this year if possible. And they sent back this letter with an estimate of what it would cost to do the north and south streets. Not cheap. The total would be eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars to do the north and south streets. And if we decide to do that, then next year we need to do the east and west streets. There's quite a bit of repairs need to be done as far as cold patch or something. The cold patch we put in, the fall didn't hold. It was wet. I don't know if that's the reason or because of that cold, but we didn't make it thick enough. I'm not sure. I've never done it before. So if that's what the county wants, they'd charge two dollars and thirty-four cents a gallon for oil, fifty dollars a ton for rock, and then they charge nine hundred dollars an hour for labor. But their estimate, twenty-three hundred gallons of oil and seventy-six tons of rock and no labor. So I don't know if they'd do that to the city. I don't know why they don't charge labor. But anyway, their total was eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars to do the north and south streets. That's gonna be some cost for repairs. Your, your recommendation? Needs to be done, should have been done five years ago, or I don't know when, ten years, has it been done in the last ten years? Anybody know? It was done when I was on the council, and that's been ten years, I think, or nine years. So it's been at least that long. It should be done to keep the streets at least in decent shape.
Is there a date that they need to know by?
Yes, very. Just please notify the road and bridge department by May second to get on the list. If you don't here by May ninth, we cannot fulfill your request this year. So we know at this meeting that we want, if we want to do that.
So, you, 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 Dex, you decided to go ahead, you.
I think it needs to be done.
Okay.
And like I said, it'll be more extensive because of more cold patch, and if we're gonna get a larger amount of cold patch, probably gonna have to have it delivered because, I think, I hold what, three tons or two tons? I don't know what it was. That was part of it on that little, on that trailer of buses, and it wasn't full, but moving it back to anybody, you're gonna have to have more than, than we got then.
Okay, do we have any comments?
I think we should go ahead and do it. So I'm motion.
Right. Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor, motion carried.
Yeah, we have that for a while.
Okay, so under this business update on the post office, I got signed off from the basement, which they said there was a smell, but I'm not sure that was the smell coming from. The mouse problem, however, she has a lady that comes in every, twice a week, I believe, to clean the post office, and she takes pictures after she's, when she gets here.
This post office?
Yes, because the person that runs the post office doesn't clean it.
She's in the lobby, I don't know.
No, she's more inside checking the mouse.
Yes, there was a mouse in the city room today.
Okay, so she said the Powhatan post office updates, all traps are empty, no longer set, droppings in all places. The clerk had cleaned up last week. The bait stations are gonna have to be used, which I have put one outside, one inside, under his desk, and one under the safe.
This, since you've got this noticed, or?
Yeah, that was, yeah. And then she sent me some pictures of where the mice turds are at, and there was one mousetrap that was never set because the staple was still in it.
So who's supposed to settle?
Um, that was supposed to be Leroy doing that. But however, as I look closer at this, the staple's still in it. So, and I told her that, and I haven't gone back in to ask her anymore. So, yeah, I just told her it was never used. So I'm not sure where we're sitting on the mouse problem yet. And then Joel is going to.
Did you ever buy any poison?
Yeah, it's in there.
Or you always said trash, I didn't know.
Yes, yeah, there's poison in there. And then the rest of the other two orders, Joel will be coming in April thirtieth to May second, which I will contact Ashley, let her know those dates, if she can tell Leroy to be there. And then I talked with David about the paneling, and then we'll ask him again about that. Um, let's see. And the Legion Hall got done in there, the ceiling, with Dale, Brad, Dwayne, and Bob. Is that it?
Looks nice.
It does. So, I will continue checking up on the, the mouse problem to see where she's at, because I know that lady comes at least once or twice a week to clean and look at it and take pictures.
Mr. Tracy?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you buy the school?
I did a quick Google search. There was a few different companies. They all seem to be linked to K D H E. I wasn't sure which one to go with, or just go straight to K D H E.
They, Luke probably helped with that.
Are they, are they, when I was doing it, a small town, I went to, since I have a building, I went to K D H E. Smaller town, they have art, the art system, and that's where they have the training. I don't know if they still do that, they may not do that anymore, I don't know.
I'll call and find out.
It was a, it was a one-day training.
Yeah, Kansas Rural Water Association, Kansas Water Environment Association. Kansas Municipal Utilities. And they all seem to have a link to K D H E, so I don't.
I can call tomorrow and find out.
They probably do, K D H E probably. Do the teaching if those meetings are sold.
And then those DMR reports, I was told that Luke was doing it and then trained you to do them, and you haven't been doing them, or?
Oh, well.
Because we're behind several months.
We got the second quarter last year, and I haven't been able to get any done since then.
Okay, we're behind what, three, three, four months now?
Three.
Five, twenty-four, and one and twenty-five, I believe.
No, they're, they're quarterly. So, it'd be. I think the second quarter still hasn't been aired, and then, uh, third and fourth, we don't have anything for. And I talked to Roland at the end of the last quarter, and I don't know if he did anything. And I'm gonna contact him again to see if we can get this second quarter started.
I don't think he ever did, he never did.
Which ones?
The DMR reports.
Uh, he did the sampling and sent it into the labs, and then he gave us all the results and whatnot, and then we.
That's not the same thing.
You're supposed to fill out that report then with that information that he gives you?
Yeah, the, yeah, all the results and whatnot, we're supposed to report it back to K D H E.
Probably needs to be caught up now.
Yeah, because we've got to do our same one violation. They have like three months worth.
But that's, the, the, the sample that Roland takes is not, has to do with the discharge of the lagoon.
Yeah, it is.
It is?
Yeah. Yeah, quarterly, there might be some other testing he does.
I think he does like around houses, too. He's supposed to.
Like in the water?
Isn't he supposed to do something with the water that we get from, uh, total wholesale?
He probably has to test it.
I know he's on that board. So maybe, that might be the testing you're thinking of, maybe?
Yeah, well, I know, we, we pay a hundred a month, I mean.
You owe us paycheck then.
We pay for the water side, not the waste side.
Yeah.
But he, he helps us out and does some of the waste side, because the waste person doesn't come and do anything.
That would be really.
Is that just about the person?
She's the one that comes back with it.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, we're getting ready. And then I'll check on the DMRs, and then I'll get his email and send the stuff to him then.
His email's in with the city emails.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
Oh, uh, update on the beaver. I got ahold of. Uh, Ed Catherns, Catherine's, uh, from Circleville. Uh, we went out and looked Saturday. It appears that beavers moved on elsewhere for now.
You heard a rumor.
So, uh, but, uh, he said he was seeing signs that we do have muskrats. And he offered to help us out with those. He said he would come up and shoot them, or he could trap them, but preferred not to shoot.
He prefer not to shoot?
No, if, if we prefer, he didn't shoot.
So you can go on.
I don't really care, go town.
I just filled his last name.
K A T H R E N S.